This is a planning board public hearing for a special town meeting that's going to be held on February 7th. Three articles pertaining to the putting the building code back into the towns zoning ordinance. And the other reason that the planning board is holding this hearing is because it's a zoning ordinance change. But other than that, the planning board has nothing to do with the building code. That is the per view of the code enforcement officer, Kenneth Paul. One more thing, if you have any comments or questions, please come up to the podium as we're being televised. And we're live from Acton, Maine. So watch your Ps and Qs. Go.
All right. This is reviewing how the building code came through Acton, went to the state level and where we're at right now. MUBEC is what it's called, the Main Uniform Building and Energy Code, and it's very confusing at the state level and contradictory, so we'll try to weed through it tonight. On June 1st, 2010, Maine went with a statewide building code. And a statewide building code allows contractors to use the same book for design, inspections, estimating, all through the whole project, and that book would work Kittery to Fort Kent. You'd have changes in the book through the charts for winds and snow loads. Down in Kittery, you'd have a higher wind in the 100 miles an hour range and the snow is only 50. You move up to Acton, the snow's going up to 80, and the winds are dropping down to less than 90. MUBEC required the towns over 2,000 to enforce a statewide building code and not the builders to be responsible for it. And it was based on the population base of 2,000. Acton had a building code starting in the late 80s. They adopted CBO for residential and BOKA for commercial. And then back in the late 90s, ICC was organized, and that was the merger of a bunch of building code organizations throughout the whole country. BOKA, the Southern, the Southern, and the Western, they all got together, merged together into one, and formed the ICC, which is the International Code Council, into one development. And that was supposed to reduce a lot of conflict. The only organization that didn't join in was NFPA. They do all the fire codes. So there's still, now we're really just down to two companies at least. '98 was the first publication for ICC, and Acton had adopted that back, I think, when '99, 2000, we adopted that. And it was really the first cycle of the IRC, the International Residential Code, and the IBC, that's the International Building Code, and that's for commercial. It's a three-year cycle with a building code, so every three years, they produce one, and towns, cities, states adopt them individually and go from there. The IRC, the residential building code, it's a prescriptive building code. It'll tell you, you need to install half-inch drywall between the garage and the house. The IBC is a performance-based building code. It's going to tell you, you need a 20-minute rating between the two. Your architects and engineers figure out what they want to use for their. So the IRC is pretty much an easy prescriptive book to follow. Acton updated their building code to the 2000 IRC in 2002. And this is really when the IRC started taking form, and it's got a lot of charts and tables, and it's much easier to calculate. 2004, Acton became ISO-certified community, and we upgraded that recertification in 2008. And we have a 2012 audit downstairs on my desk right now. The ISO sets a rating that the insurance companies will use as a factor to determine what to charge homeowners for their policy with a building code that's going to allegedly, possibly reduce your homeowner's rates. In July of 2010, Governor signed into Public Law 699. That put limits on municipal home rule authority and required towns with a population greater than 2,000 to enforce a statewide building code. It also replaced and nullified and voided any existing building codes such as we had in our ordinance. We had the 2,000. So it nullified, voided what we had, and they put the 2009 into effect because we had a population of over 2,000. With that law, under some of the exceptions they had were log homes, manufactured, post-and-beam homes, we're all into that. In March of 2011, there was a bill to repeal the MUBEC, the statewide building code throughout the whole state. That was voted down, did not pass. In September of 2011, another public law was signed in by the governor, Public Law 365, which included some emergency action, and they added some amendments to the existing law. That allowed for construction methods using straw bales and earth berm homes, so you could build your house out of straw bales. Local non-graded lumber, rough-cut lumber. It changed the basement insulation, went back to an O6. It allowed the adoption of some pool fencing, and there were some exemptions in there for potato silos. And seasonal camps are also exempted from the energy code. The seasonal camp exemption comes out in June of 2012, so it's kind of odd to throw that exemption in there and only leave it in there for six months. But somebody at the state probably needs their seasonal camp built over the winter. It still required the towns over 2,000 to issue a building code, but at that time, a certificate of occupancy, when the towns had greater than 2,000. But at that time, when the bill was signed, it changed the requirements for the population, went from 2,000 to 4,000. So we, at that time, lost the building code for the town of Acton due to, it was nullified and voided prior to. That fix-up bill or the emergency bill also allowed smaller communities under 4,000 to adopt the MUBEC in whole, which is a half a dozen different codes. Or we could adopt individual pieces of it, such as just the energy, or just the building code, or pick and choose as we felt we needed. Building code sets a bare minimum standard, so the builder can bill to know, as I had said, with the estimating, the inspections, a certificate of occupancy, at least they know what they're building to with it. Most of the builders in town exceed it real easy. They mean to tweak their work a little bit here and there, but most of it's all general The article itself is broken into three articles. One is just choosing a moderator for it. Number two A would be the adoption of the International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, their accessory buildings, renovations to it on the existing structures, and as adopted and amended by the state. B would be adoption of the International Building Code, the IBC, that's for multifamilies and commercial. The only difference you may see from the warrant and finance meeting on Monday is we put in an Article III, which pulled the energy code out of the building code, and it's a separate document itself. So Article III would be the adoption of the energy code as a standalone document and move it right into it. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
Oh, and state your name too, please, when you guys come up.
Percival Marklow, Milton Mills Road. If you look at Article III, to see if the town will adopt the 2009 International Energy Conversion Code to regulate, it should be to regulate the design and construction of buildings, not designing constructions. And the only other thing is, we're going to adopt these codes, including all amendments. Do we have a list of the amendments somewheres?
Running off the state website for the Bureau of Building Codes and Standards, we do have paper copies for them too. Right on their homepage, it's going to list the IBC, the existing, we're not touching that, the IRC and the energy code. We click on the IRC, and a lot of the verbiage is in Chapter 1 of the building code, and it really just talks about what locally is done as far as exempting sheds and stuff like that. The major changes in this cost-effective wise that the state put in was if, when you're constructing a floor system, if you're using the pre-manufactured I-joists or a floor truss, open web, which has a tendency to fail fast and fires, or a floor joist smaller than a 2 by 10, you need to protect it with something of half-inch drywall or equivalent underneath it. That's really the major amendment there. Trying to stay consistent, my hopes is that the state will go back to a statewide building code, so it's all over the whole state. Why it matters if we have 3,900 people or 4,001 doesn't make any sense to me, but...
Well, it would seem that if it was a statewide code, then anybody that's going to build a building knows where to go, find out what he needs to do to build the building. And the same thing is, if you have a building inspector or a code enforcement officer, and he goes out and looks at something, he has something to refer to and say, "Look at, this does not meet the code." You know, to me, it should be, it's kind of like this fireworks thing they were arguing about now. They allow you to sell them, but now all the towns and cities are saying you can't use them.
I've started referring it to as the one-third state building code.
Paul Point. I have, basically, my comments are coming from a starting position of the warrant and finance workshop that was held three days ago. There's been some changes since then. You know, we hashed out a lot at that meeting, and that was a good thing, so I'm picking up from that point. So Article II looks significantly cleaner than it did on Monday night, which is good. One change is that it talks about "as adopted by the state of Maine." So moving forward, is that going to be a moving target, so as the state of Maine, so we're enacting this or not on February 7th? Assuming we do, at the end of February, the state, in their infinite wisdom, makes another change. Will our town tag on to that change because it's part of what's adopted to the state of Maine on an ongoing basis? Or will we now be behind the state of Maine because we did not specifically enact that change at town meeting? Which way is that, your understanding is that going to go?
Ideally, I would like to follow the state of Maine and follow right through with it to keep it uniform. But prior, when we had, say, we had the 2,000 building code and the O3 came out, we had to come back and adopt the O3. The prior ordinances were written to say, adopted when new documents came out and it was automatically adopted. That truly wasn't legal. It needs to come back to the body and be updated. So I guess I'd have to wait to see the legislation that came out, and if it was worded that we have to adopt it and upgrade it, then we'd adopt it and we'd just stay where we're at. But I believe I would just assume the easiest is to follow the state as automatically, ideally to me, is automatically following them.
Is there any clarifying phraseology that could be put in there, or are we just sort of talking about a can of worms? I mean, it'd be kind of nice if you could look at a piece of text in the zoning ordinance and understand what the ramifications are, should the state make a change.
Yeah. And the state could make a change such as they just did before and say, "All the existing document you have, the existing code you have is null and void," which really takes away your home rule authority, but it made sense that we all got together and used the same document. Hindsight being what it is, they should have had an opt-out of the building code, meaning everybody still has it. If you want to get out of it, then vote at your town meeting to get out of it. Instead, we all have to vote to get back into it. So I guess it's stating that it means what's adopted now is what, as amended, would be part of our code, but if they put new legislation in, I'd have to look at the wording of it that may prohibit it, us, from automatically adopting us, and we'd have to go through town meeting, or it would automatically be part of it.
But if they say nothing specifically having to do with the towns, theoretically, whatever they do will be part of our ordinance as well?
Correct. Because we would be adopted as per the state of Maine with the...
Right, because it's not talking about as of the time of...
With the date and stuff like that, yeah. Usually, it's somewhat clear when the adoption comes through is what they're trying to pull in with it.
Okay. Next one is somewhat related. On Monday, we were talking about some verbiage in there of Article II that specifically excluded certain articles. And one of those articles, or actually, the general purpose of that exclusion was stated to be that those chapters that were being excluded were already covered in other parts of our zoning. So my question now is, you know, granting that this looks a lot cleaner, now we're not excluding those articles, we're including them specifically if, in fact, the state of Maine has adopted them, and I guess it's an open question at this moment whether they have or not.
Yep.
But assuming they have, does that mean that there are two semi-related parts of our zoning that are on the same topics? And if so, is there any question when you go to enforce what your rules are?
As far as the conflict. The amendments or adoption is at the state level, and the chapters they've specifically done is all at the state level. None of it's in the zoning ordinance itself. And if we look through what they've adopted, the specific stuff they left out is in other state laws, such as the electrical code, the plumbing codes, and things like that. And they did specifically leave out the energy code from the building code. What they adopted in the residential was Chapter 1, which is just administration, 2 was definition, 3 is building planning, that's a huge chapter, 4 was foundations, 5 is floors, 6 is walls and ceiling, 7 wall covering, 8 was the roofs, 9 was roof assemblies, 10 was chimneys, 11, they didn't adopt, which is energy, we have to pull in a separate energy book to bring it in.
Okay, so that covers that, right?
And then 12 is mechanical...
What about the 24 to 33, which were excluded in that last iteration?
Catch right up to you there. Mechanical runs right up through about 19. 20 to 22 works with boilers, that's coming in under a fire code. They did adopt solar systems. The fuel gas is out, which is an NFPA code through the Fire Marshal's Office. 25 is plumbing, which runs right up to 33. 34 is the beginning of electrical, which runs up to 40. They did adopt 41, which is appliance installations. 42 is swimming pools. 43, they did not, which is low power. And 44 is reference standards, which just brings in all your ANCs and ASTM standards and stuff. And none of the appendices are adopted either. Those specifically have to be adopted. They did now start to allow us to bring in G, which is swimming pool, fencing, and hut tubs and stuff.
So the 24 to 33 are not adopted by the state?
24 to 33 is not adopted through the state.
Okay. So when we say "as adopted by the state," we're basically, in a nutshell, saying the same thing, not that much of a change from Monday, essentially.
Exactly, yes. Instead of labeling the chapters that are in and out, we just go with what the state has.
Yeah.
And they've got their own separate plumbing and electrical codes and things like that, which makes it confusing. You would think that the building code people and the plumbing and electrical would all be working in the same building under the same committees and stuff, but it's brand new. It's only been a year or two since they've adopted. Other states have had it for years and years and years, so it's growing pains to go through a tough, growing pains.
Okay, thank you. I think that pretty much covers question 2. Question 3, my first impression on seeing question 3, which is new from Monday, the rationale behind it, I applaud. I think the town does need to be able to vote up or down what amounts to a generally controversial element. As far as the phraseology of the question, it seems less straightforward than Article 2. How does specifically, or how will specifically, assuming the town says, yes, they approve this, how exactly will this affect the zoning ordinance? On question 2, I see that Section 6.2.7, Sections A and B are going to be put in the zoning ordinance. I'm not quite sure what Article 3 is going to do to the zoning ordinance, assuming it's approved.
That'll be 6.2.7(c) and be put right in there. I just made the "c" on mine, but good catch. The verbiage we took right out of the codebook itself with their scope, so we were trying to figure out what to use for wording, and the design-construction of buildings for the efficient use of energy is their wording, so we just used what they had for verbiage.
Okay, so...
Throw in the same sentence, "as adopted by the state," including all their amendments.
I mean, if ultimately, the final version of this, whatever this thing is, warrant, thank you, does include specifically the change that's going to affect the zoning ordinance, then if somebody actually looking at the zoning ordinance, you know, can see what will happen if it's approved, you know, very similar to what's going on with Article 2.
Correct.
Makes a lot of sense.
Where there's nothing in the zoning ordinance, we didn't have to strike out an underline, so I guess in theory, this could all be underlined where it's all brand new, but it's all new. There's nothing in the ordinance right now where they nullified and voided what we previously had, so that was removed in September in the cleanup when we went through the ordinance.
Right. So I saw a copy of the strikeout from September, you know, and even having seen that, I wasn't quite sure where this fit in. And also, we did talk on Monday about Chapter 11, which had to do with the energy, and on Monday, we were talking about, gee, is 11 going to go in or not go in? We'll make that a separate question. So I had a question about, with Article 3, how does that affect Article 2, since we're adopting it, proposing to adopt it as the state of Maine did? But now, I'm hearing that state of Maine did not adopt...
11.
11.
Yeah.
So it's not inconsistent with question 3, which...
Correct.
...a lovely thing. The typo that Mark was talking about on Article 3, was that something we inherited from the state, or did we come up with that on our own?
That was probably our local typo. Home rule.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody on the...
I mean, I can go through the energy code if we want, but if there's no questions...
How much time would it take?
15 minutes.
Want to touch on the salient points?
We'll see what we can do. This is Chapter 11 from the building code. It's almost word for word of the 10 pages that's in the energy code itself. They didn't adopt it because in the energy code, it uses mandatory after a few of these, and in the building code, it says shall. Looking at the minutes from some of the meetings, they thought the energy code was a little bit more stringent, and there was one other area that had a difference that they went with. They list every county, every state in the United States. Maine is all what they call a Zone 6A, except for Arustic. Arustic is a 7. I'll try to get past this.
Now, this, all this is in the energy code or Chapter 11?
Both. It's the same company that makes it, and that's kind of why I thought of going with Chapter 11, because then the builder needs one book, and that's it. He's got all the documents right there. For some reason, the state didn't adopt it, so we just want to stay consistent with the state, and we'll go with the energy code itself.
So the state's energy code, they designed on their own?
No, it's part of ICC, International Code Council. So they just adopted it, but it's bigger because it...
Where'd Chapter 11 come from?
The energy code, adopted from ICC. Same people, which is what's great when you've got the same company making the energy, the building, the foundation. It's very, very few contradictions throughout it all. 11014 talks about the building thermal envelope. A building thermal envelope is where insulating the attic, the walls, and the basement. The basement's usually the controversial area because it's unconditioned space. You're either doing the ceiling in the basement, or you're doing the walls if you're heating it. That's the area that can get a little bit more costly. A lot of people don't want to look up and see all that insulation up there. This section's just saying that the insulation needs to be labeled on the back with the R value, and if you're doing blown-in upstairs, you need to label how many bags are up there and what the thickness of it is up there. There's a marker they use for blown-in insulation, little tape measures, so you can look and see how thick they blew it up in there for you.
Excuse me, this is for you to have, or this is something that's going to stay in the house forever? There'll be a little tape.
That's supposed to stay. I've never really seen them once or twice, and it's usually a government-funded energy company that goes in to take care of it. Protection of exposed insulation on the exterior, all the foam on the outside needs to be protected from the weather and the UV rays, and that goes down below, six inches below the grade. So if you've got foam on the outside, you're putting a skim coat or something on top of it, a rock or something. Point 8 allows you to use something like ResCheck, some software to allow you to do some trade-offs. Maybe you couldn't get the insulation up as high in the attic, so you can work with a program and use a better window and stuff like that. Point 9 is a certificate. You're supposed to have a certificate of all the R values, and that's going to be posted down by the electrical panel. That's going to tell you the efficiency of everything, how thick the insulation is in the walls and the ceiling. And it's good for homeowners, they come in 10 years down the road, they can look and see what's inside the walls by looking at the document. 1102 talks about the thermal envelope. As we noticed earlier, we were in a Zone 6. The U factor of our windows would need to be at least a .35. The big thing is the ceiling, R value is 49. With the old 2,000 that we had, I used to have to convert the heating degree days, and there was a formula to figure out what our insulation values were. And in the 2,000, it was 38. We never adopted the O3, the O6, any of that. We just stayed with the 2,000. And when the O9 came into effect, we bumped up to the R49 in that attic area. It's bringing the exterior walls up to an R20. We were at 19. And it's allowing, if we want, to use an R13 in the wall, we just have an R5 on the foam on the exterior of it.
Wait, wait, if you've got R13 in the walls...
Yep.
Then you're saying that the...
R5 with a rigid foam on the exterior.
On top of the sheathing and then underneath the siding?
Or in place of the sheathing, that's pretty common in the mid...
You mean like the stuff that's going, piece of OSB, styrofoam and OSB, those things?
Down in the Maryland area, they use plywood every so many feet for bracing, the rest of it styrofoam. So, and that was common in the 70s around here, they were doing that too. But the leaning, the green people are thinking, the best thing you can have is that foam on the exterior, because if you have an R20 or an R30, whatever it is, and you're framing 16 on center, every 16 inches on center, you've got an R2, whatever that stutters or something. So if you have continuously sheathed foam on the exterior, they're allowing you to drop down to an R18. It's a better sealing thing, but it's always a fine line of too much insulation in a cocoon, now you've got to bring fresh air in and exchange it out through. Or you've got mold buildup from the washer and the dryer and the sinks and the showers.
One more quick question. The R49, what's that relate to in inches of insulation? Like fiberglass?
R30, I believe, or R38 is a foot, 12 inches, and R19 is 6 inches. So 10 inches is an R30, and an R19 cross blanket on top of it, you could be at 16 inches of insulation. Of fiberglass, just guessing with the fiberglass. Blown-in is more common to see nowadays, because then you just blow it and fill the whole thing right up. The floors, they're looking for an R30 in it, that footnote G, and with the building code, everything is buried in footnotes. If it's an exemption, the builders know it instantly. If it's more restrictive, the inspectors know it instantly. R30, that's a lot of insulation in that floor cavity. That's why I would usually look at the building envelope of the basement walls and insulate that down through there. Basement walls is only an R10 or R13, depending on... Basement walls is only an R10 or R13, depending on which way you're insulating it. And as I was saying, everything's buried in the footnotes, just to watch. U factor equivalency, that would be the trade-off. Specific insulation requirements, they're talking about the attic area here. If we're required to have an R49, if we get into an area where we can't get the R49, which is usually over the top wall plates, then they're allowing us to drop down to one lower, one layer below, which... And this is typical truss construction with a top cord like this. If this was a 2x6, you'd only have five inches of insulation, five and a half. By the time you put your proper vent in there, now you're down to three and a half. You're an R13, you're not going to make it in there. But they are allowing you to drop down from your R49 here, we can drop down to R38. So, using Chapter Three of Building Planning, a raised heel truss is one method. This is a cantilevered truss here. Instead of using the other way they had it, this area here, you've got 16, 18 of inches right there of clearance, you've got plenty of room to put all your insulation in right there. So, you can work with it a little bit with your different construction methods to make it work, as long as you're thinking of it in the planning stage. It sucks to do it later.
How does the regular building, how does the IR, the regular building code address insulation, or does it at all?
Chapter 11 is almost word for word of this document.
All right, that, geez, that's right.
I'm with you.
Chapter 11 is in the...
IRC.
IRC, okay, all right.
Why they didn't adopt it, I haven't figured it out yet.
I got you.
Ceilings without an attic space, this is a cathedral ceiling. They're allowing us to drop down to an R30. That's only 10 inches of insulation. It's a minimum or a maximum of 500 square feet of the structure. In the energy code, and this is really the only difference I can find, is they're going to max you out at 20% also. This is saying 500 square feet, go ahead. The energy code is saying 20% of the floor area. Scuttles and access hatches up into that area, they want that all insulated too, so you don't have a huge heat loss getting sucked out through there. Floors, the insulation is in permanent contact, so you don't have a void in there creating drafts and such. Basement walls, they're talking about the insulation going from the top of the foundation to 10 feet below grade or to the floor down under. Slabs on grade, you're looking at bringing foam all around the edges of it, and they've got some formulas there. Crawl space, you're looking to insulate that again. Again, the main thing is you're just trying to build a building thermal envelope, an area that you can heat. Glazing, there's an exception here for 15 square feet of glazing. There was that minimum U factor, so if you've got a window that you're building or some leaded glass or something that's not listed, labeled, we don't, we can't calculate what it is, you get 15 square feet that is exempt from meeting the requirements.
Over the whole house, or just...
Yeah, yeah. So, I suppose if you came in with a small addition, you'd get 15 square feet. If you were building a whole house, 15 square feet. They're also exempting a door from being energy efficient. Usually, this is the basement door or the door going up to the unfinished attic. Air leakage, they're looking that the structure is durably sealed, caulked, every penetration, all the doors, the utility penetrations, garages, behind the showers, access doors, rim joists, everything with that air is traveling through, it needs to be sealed up. Two different ways they have compliance for that is, one, they give you this whole big list here, and an independent person verifies that the list is done, or you have a blower door test. They come in with, they basically pressurize your house, and they can watch how many Pascals transfer through, and if you've got a lot of leakage, you've got a problem.
Is this something code enforcement can do, or we're going to...
The blower door test? No, it's a private company.
Do we have to bring a VA in to do it?
VA in. We've got the visual option. A lot of towns are just saying you need a blower door test. To me, it's a choice of the builder. If they want to have a visual option done, and an independent person from the installer verifies it, then they just sign off on it. I look at independent person as the contractor, the general contractor is independent from the installer. So, we've got the visual or the other one. Fireplace doors, the gasketed and sealed, recessed lights going up through the penetrations need to be rated. Systems, they're requiring a programmable thermostat for hot air furnaces, as just like we have here with hot air. In an hour, we can bring this room up to temperature, and when we leave, we can drop it down. If it's a hot water system, you can't regulate it like that. You've got to maintain the temperature, it's too much work. Duck insulation, if it's a hot air system, they're looking for ducts to meet a minimum R value up there with the ceiling and the testing. Mechanical, is any piping capable of carrying fluids over 105 degrees need to be insulated to an R3. They used to say in the 2000, if it was an unconditioned area, so when it was in the basement and you've got a cold basement, you'd usually try to insulate those pipes, and as it went up through the house, we didn't really insulate it very often. Now, they're requiring it all to be insulated from as soon as it leaves the boiler, all the way up till it hits the baseboard, and then once it comes out of the baseboard, you're insulating it again. So, that way there, when it leaves the boiler at 190 degrees, if it's not insulated, when it's coming back to the boiler, it's probably about 120, 110, depending on how much of a run and how unconditioned it is, and that boiler has to work to get that back up to 190. When it's fully insulated, it's only diffusing the heat where the baseboard is, where it's meant to be diffused. So, when somebody comes in and does a heat calculation, they've got a good idea on how much BTUs are coming out of those areas. Recirculating hot water systems, so a regular hot water domestic in normal houses, you don't have to insulate. It's only if it's a recirc line, and those are huge houses. We see maybe one a year, and that's a circulator that's just moving hot water through the house all the time, so when you turn on your faucet and the hot water heater's 100 feet away, the hot water's right there. Mechanical ventilation, snow melting equipment, pools. Lighting system, they're looking for energy efficient for 50% of the bulbs. That's the energy code for residential.
Now, if the town decided not to accept the energy code, how would, how would you deal with it, inspecting homes, and how would it affect an occupancy permit? Or would it...
Wouldn't affect it at all. We would, there would be no minimum standard to meet. You could have a voided wall with no insulation in it, nothing in the ceiling, nothing in the basement, no pipe insulation, and it's tough to go from nothing at all to something. Just pricing out some of the stuff, I checked with one of the big box stores and just checked some pricing. R38 was a dollar a square foot, R30 was 83 cents a square foot, and R19 was 32 cents a square foot. So, if we put the 30 and 19 together for our R49, $1.15 a square foot versus the R38 was $1.1. So, we've got an increase of 14 cents going from our R38 to our R49. If we had a 28 by 40 house, a little over 1,100 square feet, $156 difference with that. But we wouldn't be going from a 38 to a 49, we'd be comparing zero to an R49, which would be expensive. And this is just fiberglass. There's a couple of different ways to do it. The other would be blown-in insulation, which is the more cost-effective method and the, let me find my truss again. Usually, in this area here, you just put a piece of plywood, and you blow your insulation right out to it, leave enough room for the air to get out through, and you just blow the whole thing full. Some of the builders on the high-end homes are using spray foam insulation, and spray foam has always been two-thirds more, so what would cost you $5,000 has cost you $15,000 in foam. There used to only be one company that do spray foam. Now, we're seeing a lot of companies out there, so I haven't priced it out in years, but hopefully, it's more compatible than it ever was. That was my energy code section.
Do we have any questions about the energy code, or anything else?
I've got what is hopefully a final point, and this continues from where I left off. Article Three. If I look at, on Article Two, 627A, I know that it applies to all new one or two-family dwellings, accessory buildings, renovations, or additions on existing structures. If I look at B, I know it applies to all new multifamily dwellings, commercial structures, their accessory buildings, and any renovations or additions on existing structures. If I look at C, which is, you know, the item, Article Three, which will turn into Item C, I don't know that. I think you made a comment right at the end of your remarks that that is, applies to residential. How specifically would we phrase it to be in keeping with A and B so that we know exactly, and when enforcing, you know exactly where this will apply in terms of construction?
The verbiage we stole right out of their book, just trying to see how many chapters the energy code is. The energy code is six chapters. One and two is administration. Three is the climate zones, which we saw in the picture of the United States, and then it listed every town and country. Chapter four is residential, five is commercial, and six is reference standards. The verbiage I took right out of their book itself, for it's the design and construction of buildings, maybe the word is "all buildings" for the effective use of energy. So, we've just taken the verbiage of their intent for the code.
Okay, so would it, would C apply to more structures than A and B apply to? Because A and B are somewhat inclusive, you know, and anything that's not mentioned there is excluded, and so are we saying "all buildings"? And if so, should we say "all buildings" under all circumstances? I mean, yes, I am trying to be nitpicky, because this is a good time to do it.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
As opposed to, once it's in place, and we go, gee, I'm not really sure what that applies to.
You, in the energy code itself, it's going to talk about conditioned space. If your chickens have a heating system in there, then yes, we would need to make sure the chickens are kept warm at a reasonable cost to heat the chickens. A heat lamp in there, I wouldn't call it a conditioned space. I would say if you've got a furnace in there and you're using fossil fuel to heat the thing, then it would be a building that needed to be insulated, and then the insulation would follow the energy code.
Would we, is it intended that this is the aggregate of A and B, of the structures mentioned in A and B?
Correct.
And if so, can we sort of string all of that together and say, this is what we mean? Or refer to A and B and say, you know, for these structures and these conditions, we're going to do this too?
It's...
Right now, I'm not quite sure what it would mean if we just put it in the way it's phrased.
If it was adopted, the book was adopted, and we looked at the book itself, it's got existing buildings, historic buildings, addition renovations, repairs, change of occupancies, mixed use. So, we'd look at the document itself to when it applied and when it didn't. Maybe the word is "all buildings" or something like that, but as you were looking at the document itself, the energy code is going to talk about the conditioned space. And if you've got a unheated garage, and you have no intentions of ever heating it, then you don't need to insulate it.
Does it also refer to renovations and additions, that kind of thing?
Yep, additions, alterations, renovations, or repairs.
So, we'd essentially be moving the detail from the overview section, which would be our ordinance, to the document itself, and whatever it says, if there's an applicability in what we're doing here, that's what we're going to do.
And once we, if the planning board choose to move forward with this tonight, we'll have links on the town website to allow people to look at the documents too.
Okay, thank you.
Kenny, I would hope the, the energy segment of this makes sense, and I would hope that somewhere in the text, you could diffuse what might be a red herring coming up to this town meeting, and hinge, I would hope there's something in the document that would hinge the conditioned space to human habitation. There must be. I mean, it's, this is done by rational human beings, I think, and...
We're talking about the state.
When you, when you, no, the state, as I understood it...
The people who documented, who designed it, the engineers and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, when you talk about the costs, the upfront costs, you, of course, are not considering the, the energy savings that are produced by this improved construction, so...
Yeah, well, when I constructed the first house I was in for many years, oil was 50 cents a gallon. It cost me a gallon a day to heat my water for showers. Still with the newer system, I'm still using about a gallon a day to heat for showers and stuff like that, but now it's four bucks a gallon for fuel. 356 times a day, times four, it's $1,000 something dollars just to heat hot water. It can get expensive very quickly. One of the expensive areas I see in it is insulating those pipes. That is, you've got a lot of feet of pipes all through that building, and that can get expensive, but there's a, eventually, the more oil cost or gas cost, the quicker your payback would be. And I think we know it's just a matter of time till it gets very expensive, the fuel, fossil fuel anyways.
I mean, I, I mean, you're, you would stand behind this, I would assume.
The energy code?
As a, as a rational step in terms of improving our, our housing stock in Acton.
Yeah.
There's no sense, there's no earthly reason or sense to building a poorer housing stock from the day this is enacted onwards in Acton, Maine, versus what is built in our surrounding communities.
Correct, because when, a, a good builder constructs a house, I'm assuming this house is here for 100, 150 years, could even be 200. We see some good 200-year-old houses that are still out there. So, well, and a, well, an efficient house in Acton, 35 a year, 40, whatever we're doing, times multiple towns, times multiple states, it's huge across the country savings-wise. We're all a little reluctant to be told to put in this much and that much, but if we think of it as our kids buying that house in 10 years from now, we want them to be able to afford to live there, because it's just not the cost of the mortgage and the insurance and the taxes, it's the actual utilities too, and that, it's only getting I wish there was some verbiage in this that exempted if you weren't using fossil fuel. They pulled that out a few years ago, I think, just because of the pollutants out of the wood stoves. So, there was an exemption if you were just heating with wood boilers and there was no fossil fuel, they had an exemption in there, but they pulled that out a few years ago.
Oh, I could, one quick one. You and I have spoken before about the Taunton Press Reader's Digest synopsis of these building codes.
Yep.
Do you know if that's going to be available on this one?
They are out there, you can get them. They're, nothing I usually give out, because you really have to know what you're looking for to see when they're, because the building code is international, and those Taunton Press things, I think they run in like a 20-pound snow load, so they work great in Arizona, but you're not using them up in this area, and they can be misleading in a few areas. The electricians, plumbers, all own codebooks, the builders, we've only got a few in town that own a codebook. They just rely on us to guide them in what they need.
So, I mean, you would, you would provide that assistance to builders, to get us up to speed on this?
Well, we've had it in place for a year and a half. It's been since June of 2010. We just had it taken away from us in September, so we've been without it, October, November, December, three months now, maybe five tops when we're done.
And the, but the energy code is, was also in place?
Energy code was in place, yeah. And like I said, with the 2000, it was much more complicated to try to track down, because I'd have to calculate the heating degree days, find that information, bring it across the chat, and come through there, but, yeah.
It wasn't as extensive as it is now. It wasn't the, well, the 49 started in 2009. We were using 2000, right?
Correct, yeah.
And it didn't have the insulation of the mechanical piping.
Correct. I think the 49 came in 2003, is when they bumped it up to there. And the mechanical piping, I think, was '06, where they dropped the word "unconditioned", it said. In unconditioned space, you'd, you'd wrap it. The insulation on the piping, that did get expensive. The cheap stuff was 31 cents a foot, the much better stuff was $1.95 a foot.
Before it's done, it won't be a problem. Now, is that, when you said cheap stuff, is this the slit tube stuff?
Yep, yep.
Was it R3 that it needed, or...
Correct. The Armiflex is the black stuff that you see out there, and the, the better stuff is the white stuff with the fiberglass in it that you usually see in commercial projects. When I was checking on... When I was checking on Home Depot, neither one of the ones they had were Energy Star rated, which Energy Star is just a certification that a lot of builders are using for different qualifications.
But they meet the R requirements, though.
The 3?
Yeah, all right.
Again, you can find substandard stuff at some of those big box stores, and you go to another place and have the product right there.
Anyone else with any comments, questions? This is it. How about TV Land? Call up real quick.
Send an email in.
Yeah, oh, that's it. Yeah, we'll get Tom right on there. All right, then, going, going, gone. Public hearing's closed. Thanks for coming, everybody.